I'd like to call the board, the council meeting. This is the city council work session. It's Monday, September 11th. There will be a regular meeting following the work session. And we are all present. We have one item on the agenda tonight. And I would like again to remind, but chief, before I say this, there were places in there, the presentation, you might be able to stop and, because I read it through two or three times, it's a long presentation. And so can you, as you go through, if you think it's kind of one of those spots to stop, would you do that? I'm going to leave it up to you.
Sure.
If you don't find it, just keep going.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
So the fire chief will provide the council an update on the completion of the regional grant for the Mobile Integrated Healthcare Community Paramedicine, MIHS CP Pilot Program. Paul Luizy, fire chief, presenting. Paul?
Hi, good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to come back to you and kind of wrap up our grant. But first, what I wanted to do is just take you through some of the background of how we got here, the review of the actual grant process, some data review opportunity, and then we'll have time for questions. Also, at the end of my presentation, we'll have a short video that our communications staff has been working on and kind of wraps up and tells the whole story of the program. So really what brought us here is we were starting to see an increased use of the 911 services by repeat customers for non-emergent needs. The other things that were happening as well is the Affordable Care Act is finding hospitals for patients that were re- admitted into the hospital within 30 days of their discharge. We further moved to work with our healthcare partners to try to figure out, is what we're seeing true? Are you actually also seeing the same type of data? So we worked with the Health Service Advisory Group out of Phoenix, and they helped us define the area. So we defined it as West Valley or west of I-17. And what they were finding was a little bit more alarming than what we were seeing. They were seeing about 1,200 patients that were re-admitted to the hospital within seven days of being discharged. So there was absolutely a gap there. And 60% of those patients were being discharged without any home healthcare services whatsoever. So we definitely noticed that the same patients that we were starting to see were having some of the same problems. There was that gap within the healthcare system. So to define what community paramedicine is, it really was using the medics to help coordinate care for the patients that otherwise would use the 911 system. It is still today, even today, still a very new and evolving model. Nationally, it has gained a lot of attention in many different states. There's over 33 states that have community paramedicine programs. It really is not an attempt to replace other healthcare providers. We're trying to supplement what's out there. And again, to try to fill that gap that's created in the healthcare system. It has to be team-based in order to be successful. In a national study, 66% or two-thirds of those patients that were seen by community paramedicine programs were actually referred back to home health services. So again, even in the national study, they're showing that they don't want to be the end-all, be-all. They want to be that resource to refer back to the appropriate healthcare resource. And there was actually the American College of Emergency Physicians that actually came out and supported the use of community paramedicine. So we looked at ourselves and we said, what are we seeing that's occurring within our own city? So in this year, I'm sorry, in 2015, we looked at it an entire year, and we found 44 patients in our own city that were causing over 395 calls for service. And they were non-emergent needs, but they were definitely our repeat customers, or as we term them, our loyalty customers. We further dug down into the data, and we found that in addition to these patients, we had 310 patients that were admitted to the hospital that were now accessing the 911 system for help within 30 days of discharge. And then additionally, 469 patients that were seen in the emergency room that were accessing the 911 system again within 30 days for assistance. So this definitely helps strengthen our argument. So we had multiple conversations with the council about this, and we did move forward with a regional grant through the Vitalist Health Foundation. In 2016, we were awarded $125,000, which would fund us, which we initially thought for about eight months, it actually funded us for an entire year. So the Community Paramedicine Pilot Project helped make contact with those citizens through those dollars. It really allowed us to define what a regional concept would look like, what field referrals would look like. We wanted to work with our healthcare partners with tenant and Abrazo Healthcare Systems. We also started to look at the entire region and tried to see if we defined this, so we said the definition was three or more times in a month, or 12 or more times in a year. If they're accessing 911, that would be the definition of a high utilizer. So we went to our five partner cities and said, okay, what does that look like in your city? So what we found was over 400 patients that were actually making it up, about 2,700 calls per service for years. So pretty significant number. And then the citizen population amongst the five cities was 473,000. So those agencies that worked with us the entire time was Avondale, Goodyear, Peoria, the Sun City Fire Medical District, and then Surprise Fire Medical. So the regional grant helped establish defined outcome indicators to measure the effectiveness. We really wanted to reduce the non-emergent needs of 911, and then hopefully, in turn, reduce the 30-day readmission rate. We attempted to define a cost per call and establish a training curriculum that could be used in really any jurisdiction, not just what we were doing, but be able to be shared amongst other jurisdictions. And really wanted to demonstrate that regional collaboration. We also found that there were some benefits of the program that we put into the grant. We wanted to create that sustainable model, and this was really that first step. We wanted to be fiscally responsible with the taxpayer dollars. We wanted to reduce the unnecessary use of the 911 system. We wanted to leave those critical emergency vehicles reserved for true emergency calls. We wanted to decrease the burden on the emergency departments, because, you know, that truly does affect our system as well. If those beds are being taken up, then the medics are waiting to bring offload patients into the emergency department. That causes a backup into the system. It also provides support for our vulnerable population, and that's the ones that we're trying to protect the most. Opportunity to maximize and collaborate amongst the region, and really wanted to provide that outstanding innovative customer service. So some of the accomplishments as we look back, creating the IGA amongst five government agencies was going to be what we thought a big task. And in fact, it actually only took us a little bit over a month. And just kudos to the Goodyear Legal Department to kind of help us get that moved through really quickly. Lisa Wallen, when she was here, was really the impetus to get that done and create a collaborative environment for all the legal teams to have input on. We delivered an initial 24 hours of community paramedicine training, and it was delivered to the 25 medics. So each of the five cities selected five medics to participate in this training program. We also delivered monthly ongoing training for the medics at a minimum of at least three hours. We developed protocols and guidelines. We had established a very good community resource referral and relationship program. Our medical direction with Dr. Gail Bradley was excellent. She was there with us side by side the entire way, helping us develop all the protocols, the guidelines. And actually, she volunteered to take an entire day of the training. So kudos to her and what she did with us. And then also, we worked with the Bob Ramsey Foundation to help develop a customized electronic patient care reporting system. He actually sent over developers to a meeting with us, and we sat there for a couple hours and just completely developed a customized database with them. That referral network that I did talk about, we had the kickoff event in September of 2016. We did have multiple agencies that came, but we really developed a very strong relationship with the agencies that I mentioned up there. And while they're not all non-for-profits, they are very beneficial to the resources that truly our patients needed. Benavia, Brookdale, Care First, Area Agency on Aging, Crisis Response Network, Home Instead, Hospices of the Valley, which was just incredible. They sent us so many resources. And then towards the end, the Meals of Joy that was established in our city, and we helped get out to our residents. During their home visits, these are several of the things that they would complete on each of the home visits. So they would do a complete history and physical with vital signs, home safety checks for all the patients, ensure that the patient had the appropriate amount of nutrition in their pantries or in their refrigerators. We would do medication reviews with them to make sure we didn't have any duplicates, expired, or unfilled medications. We'd do a completed social assessment on them as well. So if they did want to have a tobacco cessation or alcohol reduction, that we can get them into the right programs to help with that. Health education materials, depression screenings, obviously, that all that information went into the electronic patient care reporting system. And then each patient got a satisfaction survey prior to the crew's leaving. And then the form that's there, that's pictured, was developed by our team and was left with every patient. So they, when we did leave, they still had those resources on their refrigerator to make sure if they needed help that we were still there and being able to access us however they needed to. We also had additional resources. We gave each of the units gift cards, cash cards. And within the first few months, you know, when we held the monthly meetings, we asked, you know, do we need to refill the cards? Is everybody doing okay? And they hadn't used them yet. And so one meeting, they did tell us about an older lady that had no food in her house whatsoever. So medics took her over to Walmart and let her shop. And, you know, she used the gift card with the medics there, but she was able to buy all the groceries she needed and stuff for her for home. We also found patients didn't need to grab rails in their bathrooms or other types of equipment. And the medics could use that card to react quickly and go out and get that. So that was a nice piece of resource that they could have for them. Several of the patients needed their prescriptions picked up, so we were able to do a lot of that stuff for them as well. We worked with our charities group from each of the labor groups in each of the five cities, and they would help us with durable medical equipment. That ended up being a little bit of a challenge for us at first, but once we let it be known that we needed it, we started getting a lot of that durable medical equipment. So walkers, canes, crutches, wheelchairs, grab rails in the showers, I mean, a lot of that stuff. One kind of cool story was a, actually, a retired LA county firefighter who was a double amputee diabetic in a wheelchair in his home in Surprise. He only had one ramp that was exiting his house. So we wanted to make sure that he had a second ramp. So the medics, when they were seeing him, called to the charities group, and by that afternoon, they had the second ramp built, but they also had the first one improved as well. So it was really neat to kind of see them come and help out like that. So let's look at who we served. So we had a total patient enrollment of 178 patients. So as I stated previously, we had over 450 patients in the five cities, but we couldn't get all of them to really participate in the program. Some didn't want help, some didn't feel like they needed help, some had moved. But we had 178 patients that we enrolled, and this was truly a mix of our high utilizers and also some field referrals, and I'll talk about that in a minute. With that, we actually made 758 patient contacts. So we averaged about three visits with each patient. Now, sometimes that was on the phone, sometimes that was in person, but we always made that contact with the patient, and it came up to, like I said, the 758 times. The average age of our patients was 70. The average length of our calls were an hour and 10 minutes, and that was actually down from an hour and 28 when we first started. So we started to see some efficiencies as times went on. And then the types of referrals that we got, we actually started getting more field referrals. So as the medics were trained, we said, okay, now you're going to be the disciples, and you're going to be the entrepreneurs, you're going to go out and start to preach the word to all the firefighters and the fire stations that didn't have this training. And once they started doing that, we also allowed for a data exchange to occur. So if a field crew did see somebody that needed to see a community medic, they could simply, you know, allocate that chart for review, and it would go directly to the community medics, and they would schedule an appointment to go out and see that person. So 61% of our patients actually came from field referrals. And then another, about 12%, came from Abrazo Tenant and other agencies. But that's really where a lot of our patients came from.
I'll go pause for a question.
Sure.
So I know at the beginning, the thought was to alleviate some of the 911 system.
Right.
So it, you didn't, can you elaborate more about 27% frequent 911 users? So you didn't get from the 911 system who people were, correct? Explain what this, what do you mean? Was that some of the 178 that you connected together was the 27%?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yep, yep. So those patients enrolled, a little bit over a quarter of them came from the, our frequent flyer numbers.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so kind of the drum roll piece. So we had 74 patients that were really impacting the 911 system. So three or more calls in a month, 12 or more times in a year. So out of that, out of the 178...
Good year or regional?
Regional.
Regional.
Yep. So out of that 178, 74 of them were really hitting the system quite a bit. So they would call the system 447 times. After the community paramedics did their visits three or more times, we checked to see afterwards if we changed behaviors, we provide the correct resources, what impact may have. They went from 447 calls to 911 to 54. So we actually saw an 88% decrease in calls per service.
What's the timeframe for that?
From October until June, end of June. So then we looked specifically at Goodyear, because we know that you would be interested in that. Of the 48, 44 original patients, we were able to enroll only 20 of those. Within that group, we were able to reduce their non-emergent need, use of the 911 system by 77%. And then we also enrolled an additional 35 patients from field referrals, and we were able to reduce their non-emergent needs by 86%. So big changes there for them. Some of the lessons that were learned from the program, we had a really tough time rolling this out initially, because we actually rolled it out right in the middle of the presidential elections cycle. So there were a lot of robo-calls going out at that time. And so when you had a cold call coming from the city of Goodyear, you know, it, yeah, it wasn't really taken that well. But we worked through that piece. We did have a lot of difficulty, as I spoke to earlier, about enrolling our frequent users. Many of them just didn't want that help. And we tried multiple times to call them, try to use some of their family members to assist with them, but just some of those patients just didn't want our help. We definitely discovered that there was a need for a full-time administrative person. We did have a firefighter that was injured, firefighter paramedic Tina Yowey, who went through the training, and she was injured during that time, and she actually served as our administrative person during that. So it was great use of her time. She was really bought into the system and really helped deliver a high-value product for us. We definitely discovered that the field referrals were some of our best success stories. One of the field referrals that I can think of that happened up in Peoria was a 24-year-old gentleman that would call the 911 system almost every night. He was a veteran, deployed multiple times, and he would have anxiety in the middle of the night. And so he would drink in excess to try to reduce the anxiety. So the guys would just continue to bring him to the ER, and this wasn't something that was going to work. So he was referred to the system. They went out and saw him and really dug down and tried to figure out what some of the root causes were. And one of those was he's, he was very, had a high literacy in his healthcare needs. He knew that his anxiety meds, he couldn't take it with alcohol, so he didn't. So he never took his anxiety meds, but he took alcohol to help reduce some of the anxiety that he was feeling. But they asked him right away, they said, do you want to get into a program? Absolutely. So they got him into A.A. They also asked him, do you have benefits? And he says, well, no. And they said, well, you're a veteran, of course you have benefits. They took him down to the VA, got him signed up for his benefits. They helped him get into a program to help him find a job, and they also, he needed transportation, and he had lost his license, so they found him a bicycle to be able to ride. So he did have one slip-up during the program and called 911, but the, his sponsor for A.A. went and picked him up at the ER. And he's never, thankfully, had to call the 911 system again. So definitely a high success story for him. And in the video, you'll see a patient that we had that's from Goodyear that was a frequent user of the 911 system. And when the guys went in to interview him, there was just very simple things. He was a diabetic and would always get himself into trouble. And so they asked him, when do you have your low sugars? Well, I have them in the afternoon. Well, what are you doing? Well, I'm working in my office. Well, do you have snacks nearby? Well, no. So just simply, just them kind of seeing the bigger picture, moving his snacks into his office, solved a lot of his problems. So it's just, you know, some of those great little stories that kind of helped build the importance of the program. We also found that the niche patient populations appears to be both the field referrals and frequent users are the ones that are most open to it. So, you know, maybe they've gotten stuck into the system. This is their only way that they know how to solve their healthcare needs, or their social needs, or their resource needs. Those end up being those niche patients for us, and they were the most open and accepting of the entire program. And like I said, the need for the durable medical equipment was great at first, but then, once we started contacting our resources, saying this is what we need, so many of those resources stepped up to really help us out, so. Our patient satisfaction survey, as you can see, those numbers up there were excellent. The one that kind of hit me pretty hard, it was the crews listening to them. You know, they've taken the time, typically on a 911 call, the crews don't have a lot of time in the house with the patients. They're trying to solve the problem right away, and let's go to the hospital. With this, they're spending over an hour with the patient, and really trying to dive down and try to figure out what are some of their triggers on their healthcare needs, and, you know, why do they call 911 when there's no other resource for them? How can we help them with that piece? 100% they would absolutely recommend the service. They found the experience is excellent. The one that, you know, makes me a little nervous, just from a system standpoint, is if the system didn't work, would you take an ambulance to the ER? And 53% said yes, but 31% said maybe. So there's still that need out there that we have to kind of change that mindset that for non-emergent needs, there's other resources out there. So that's something that we have to continue to kind of look at. Create a sustainable payment model, that's the one thing that we're, we continue to work on and look at. Ensuring that the other healthcare partners are willing to come to the table and help us with this as well. We did, I did just schedule a meeting with Arizona Care Network, which is an accountable care organization that works with Abrazo and Dignity to talk more about this program. They do have an interest. We'll just see what that interest kind of turns out to be. I was hoping it was going to be before this meeting tonight, but it's in early October. I think we've definitely demonstrated that there is a need for this service, and I think there is definitely benefit to the community from the service. We don't know what the direction in the Affordable Care Act is going to be at this point. There's so many different, you know, opportunities out there, but there's also going to be a lot of certain challenges out there. And I think if I knew that direction, I'd probably be sitting in DC making a lot of money right now. But, you know, right now, it's just, it's so up in the air on which way this will go. If we change to a value-based system, I think you might really see community paramedicine take off. But if we kind of stay in the current format, pay-for-service type format, then, you know, it's going to be really a toss-up on whether that happens or not. And then obviously, the workforce challenges. We did survey all of the medics that participated, and they found it very helpful in their careers, and it allowed them to really kind of use new skills and gain new knowledge, skills, and abilities. But one of the things that we heard back from them for, on, was they thought that this was really just a one-year cycle. They didn't really see themselves extending, because, you know, when you go into being a firefighter, you want to go on those 911 calls, you want to, you know, make a difference every single day. But I think there's definitely a niche workforce that has an interest in this, and is trying to just recruit some of those folks as well.
I have one question over here.
Sure.
Just briefly, you said value-based format. What does that mean, or what does that look like?
So it's more, and this is gained through talking to CFOs from hospitals, it's more of a bundled payment. So, you know, if you're going to come in and you're going to have your healthcare provided by X hospital, they're going to try to bundle that, all of what they think it would cost you throughout the year into one payment to the hospital. And then if it costs, we'll say, a million dollars to take care of you and your family, and you only end up spending $500,000, there's that value base that's in there. So there's a valued savings, both for the hospital and for the insurance companies. And so they try to figure out what's the split on that. Is it 60/40, 50/50? How do we kind of share that value that we get? But where the community paramedicine piece fits in is, how do I keep you out of the hospital and in your house, and comfortable with the right resources that you need, instead of hitting the emergency department? Because that's where I start to lose my money. So it is, it becomes a dollar game, but that's really how they kind of work the value-based system. And I did, if I could have, Lanny, if I could have Elmo, I did have some other metrics that we wanted to talk about, because that was one of the things when we left the meeting last time, the last time we met, was creating some of the measurements that we could report back out on. So some of the ones that we created as a group was the percent of paramedics that successfully completed the initial training program. Our goal was 80%. We got that to 100. Percent of enrolled patients who received a full assessment, our goal was 90/100. Time on task, so how much time did the medics spend? We thought 60 minutes going into the program, because that is the national standard, and we spent about 70 minutes with our patients, as I stated. Reduction in the use of the 911 system for non-emergent needs, we thought about 20%, but we actually kind of blew that one out of the water, so. Enrolled patients who required transport to the EED, we thought about 15%. It was actually 1.75. So out of all of our patients, only three patients actually required transport to the ED when the community medics arrived. Let's see, other ones. Paramedics that rate the program as valuable, 100%. Patients that rate the CP program as excellent. And the paramedics that rate that they gain new knowledge, skills, and abilities was 92%. So there's value all around there, and it's just trying to figure out where this all sits.
We have one question here. Joe?
You know, I can see, I can see value in this program, but I see a lot of people who give value in this. When you look at the Affordable Care Act, I think your best-case scenario is the costs are going to go up, because if they, if the insurance costs, the way the model is set up right now, keeps going up, people will choose not to get the insurance, which means they're going to show up and use the emergency room, since you can't turn them away.
Right.
And they won't have insurance. So that's additional cost to the hospital.
And they're uninsured, yes.
And they're uninsured. The other potential option is if they change it in such a way where they just drop people, you're going to have the same issue.
Right.
You're going to have people showing up that are uninsured. So I see where this can fill that void for people that are using ER as their primary physician. But at the same time, I think somehow, and I'm hoping that when you have your meeting with the hospitals and the CFOs and CEOs, that they see the value in that, not just from the fact, because I assume if they show back up in 30 days, they have to treat them free?
Yeah, if it falls into the five categories, then they can be fined 3% of their total Medicare dollars. It's just not that patient. It's the entire system, what their Medicare dollars are.
I guess, I guess my point I'm making is, it's value in them funding this program.
Right.
Because if they can keep that patient from showing up at the hospital by what you're doing to keep them going there, not only do they save that cost or save that repetitiveness on that 30-day, but staffing needs, maybe other people are getting better and quicker turnaround time in the emergency room, because you have true emergencies sitting in there. in the emergency room because you have true emergencies sitting in there. So, uh, you know, I think this is a great program. I'm just hoping as you go forward and you meet with the providers, that they can see that value as well and, and come on board to try to maximize this.
Agreed.
Oh, were you finished? Do you have a little bit more you want to add?
I have the video, but if you guys want to do questions now, we can do the video after. I just wanted to spend, it's only, I think, two minutes.
Can I get the video?
Uh, just to follow...
Questions right now? Okay, all right. Who wants to start? Sherry?
I, I just think it's a great program. And, um, we've clearly planted the seed and we're starting to grow it. How can we keep this going so we don't have a lapse? What's the plan?
So you guys were very generous and helped us fund, uh, you know, it would be only for the city of Goodyear, um, but you did provide some funding for us. Uh, one of the ideas that we're talking about internally right now is turning back on that data point. So we did that on September 1st. To try to see from a field referral piece, are we getting referrals from the crews to say, "Hey, we need a community medic to go out and see this patient." And then what we could do, at least in my mind, we needed to continue to work this through. From, on an overtime basis, we could bring the guys back in on one day a week and schedule appointments to go out and see patients, uh, you know, one day a week as opposed to two or three times a week. So I think we can, you know, make something like that work, unless I'm not thinking of all the steps.
You're doing a great job and thank your crews for that. I just would hate to see a lapse where you've now got these people into the system. We don't want them to start back to the nine, so you're starting from scratch.
I agree.
So that's a great job.
I agree.
Question?
Thank you.
Bill?
Chief, do we, have we established enough, uh, Goodyear data points that we'll be able to figure out? If we've had a backslide because we haven't been doing it? I mean, are we, are we in a position to talk about this from a data-driven perspective rather than a feel-good perspective?
Yeah, so we, um, like I said, we, we established that, that data set. The other piece that we also established was with, um, Health Currents. They're a non-for-profit that track all of Medicare patients within Arizona. So they have over 7 million patients in their database. And, um, what we did was we partnered with them and we flagged our patients. So we can see if they start to call or show up in the emergency departments and then what's their mechanism for going into the emergency department. So we're working with them right now to kind of track some of that data as well. But I want to go back to Health Service Advisory Group and have them help us with our data and clean it up a little bit and see the impact that we had. So, you know, 88% reduction. Did we really have that type of reduction? Did the hospitals see that as well? So was there a collaborative, uh, reduction in? We've heard that anecdotally, that calls for service are down and ER population's down a little bit. But I want to work with this data group to see is it, was that true? But we wouldn't be able to work with them until this September. So we're stuck calling them and see if they can work on that. But that's how we, we can track it right now from data set.
Okay, and then, uh, the second question that I had and final question was, are we, you, I think you talked about it, but I wasn't sure if it was just a anecdote or not. Where are we at with finding a replacement to the grant? Is there another grant, grantor?
There, there is not. It would, would be us working with Arizona Care Network to try to find some sustainable solution with them. There has not been anyone else that has come to the table with it. We've been working very closely with Stan on this. And he's really been the, Stan Holm, the West Valley CEO. He's been really great about trying to get us in front of different audiences. We did have a long conversation with Care First. It just didn't pan out for us. And so we, we continue to kind of look for that, that opportunity. We know it's not a sustainable model, uh, just relying on the city to, to fund it. So we, we have to look for those other partners to come to the table.
Okay, thanks.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it did. Thank you very much.
Holly?
I have a couple of questions, Chief. How many actual Goodyear residents were served? I know you said 447 is what you used. And then you said, uh, you signed up, or you, you, out of 44 or something, you got 20 Goodyear patients.
Twenty.
And then you were able to refer or sign up 35 more. So does that mean for this year that you've been working?
Yes.
We've only got 55 residents in Goodyear that we've actually served?
Yep.
All right. And my next question is, how many Goodyear residents frequently called 911? And were we able to reduce that? And how many did we reduce it by?
So we reduced it by the 77%.
Yeah, but you said that this was like, it was the five cities.
On, on this, um, yep.
So 77% to hire 911 call?
Just for Goodyear patients.
Out of how many calls? So you...
Uh, there were, for the...
Thousands of people you served in.
For the high utilizers, there were, let's see, 134.
134.
911 calls. And then for the field referrals, there were 92.
So 134 and 92 were the, were the high callers?
134 were the high utilizers, yep. And then 92 were the field referrals.
Okay, and then what did you reduce it down to?
We, 77%.
Well, you can say in, uh, 70, well, is that 23 people?
Oh, okay, so actual numbers, so...
People, or...
So we went from, uh, down to 25 on the high utilizers and 16 on the referrals.
Then that, to me, is more important than the 77% because it's 77% of what? You know, it could be a 15 people, so, okay. What is the cost to continue the program only in Goodyear in your estimation?
I think the, if, if we looked at it from a, a day, one day per week, you know, I thi- I think we'll kind of fit it into that 125 to 130,000 dollars. Um, the, one of the struggles will be the vehicle for us as well. Just because we, we were loaning that vehicle from, from Fleet to run that program. And also the other equipment was loaned through all of the five cities through the IGA. So there's going to be some, um, capital costs as, as well for that.
But you're not buying an ambulance or anything. It's just another truck.
No.
And you're just...
Right.
You're carrying a medical bag similar to what your paramedics carry.
Correct. Yep.
All right, and so I'm assuming you can make the program cost-effective?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so when this first came before, I mean, I think it's a wonderful program, but I am not in favor of using city funds. I think it needs to be self-sustainable. And I'm surprised that the hospitals aren't jumping on board because they're the ones that get penalized the most when these patients return to them with the same diagnosis within 30 days. Because 3% of their overall Medicare payment could be millions of dollars.
Yes.
And for us to just need 150,000, that's just a drop in the bucket to them. But if it would keep patients from returning to their hospital, I think they would be wanting to do that. And I think it's a wonderful program. And I'm just hopeful that we'll be able to find funding. But since the city is not charged with providing healthcare to residents, that's not one of our responsibilities in the statutes. And we do provide them with police and fire. And this is just an offshoot of our fire department. It's a wonderful program, but I really want us not to rely on city funds because, um, it's just, I just don't think we should do that. Otherwise, we're going to be in the healthcare business once we start this. And it's going to be coming out of the general fund. And we're only, um, servicing a very small population of our city, whereas our ambulance service will be available to every resident in our city that calls 911. And I'm really, um, hopeful that we are successful in getting our ambulance service up and running. So I thank you for your presentation.
Bill?
Sorry. I flew this morning, so I'm...
Forgot.
No, I didn't forget. I just, I'm still trying to transition back into this life. Anyway, um, I, I, while I tend to agree with the, like, we shouldn't be spending a lot of general fund money, I think one of the reasons that we decided to push forward with the ambulance service discussion was because of the community paramedicine piece. And, um, me, uh, Sherry, what did you say? The cheap, cheap old uncle?
Yeah, you're our cheap old uncle.
Yeah, so whatever that was. So the cheap old uncle is not, uh, not ready to jump off the deep end on that one yet. But I am curious to, to know the positive impact that this is having on the, on the 911 system. That we've seen, you know, this decrease that we've seen, 77% of 100 and some calls. I don't know that that's really going to make a, how big of an impact that's going to have. But it's a very tiny little window that we measured. So I think long-term, we probably need to see an effect of that. And then the, secondarily to that, to that piece is this, and I, this is a, I'm going to try to frame this in the way of a question. Is this program perhaps better administered if and when we have our own ambulance service as opposed to a standalone service? Because they've already got the equipment, they've already got the blah, blah, blah. Is there a, perhaps maybe that's the better opportunity? I'm not saying we wait until then. I'm just saying, is that a, maybe a better delivery model?
I guess the answer is, I don't know.
Okay.
You know, um, there, there's another program right now, and not to confuse matters with you, but there is another program that the state is working on with access. And it's called Treat and Refer. It's, it's similar, but it's different. But it, the, the platform is still the 911 response unit. But there's the ability for them to treat the patient and then refer them to a resource as opposed to transporting to the, to the emergency department. So I, I think if we have an offshoot or some type of, uh, hybrid of that, I think we could make it successful. I, I think where it really lies, relies the most success is the regional approach to it. Because not everybody is, is dedicating a piece of apparatus to this system. You know, we could really service all five cities with one vehicle. But it's just trying to figure out, how do we get, you know, somebody to pay for all five cities? Or how do we get all five cities to agree this is valuable enough that we, we all fund a piece of it? So it's something that we, we're continuing to have conversations about and kind of, you know, try to find and brainstorm those ideas and, and see where, where it best fits, so.
So I guess the final follow-up piece to that is, based on the resources that you have for this fiscal year, are we going to be able to have a better look at the end of this fiscal year?
It will be smaller, you know, because it will only be the Goodyear patients.
Which is probably the only look we really care about.
Right.
I mean, no offense to everybody else, but...
No, I agree. But I, I just, you know, hopefully, yes. I, I want to see that reduction and I want to have more conversations with you. But hopefully the conversation that I have with you is, "Hey, I found some funding source." Not, yeah, that's the best conversation.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Actually, to follow up with Bill, because I was really close to asking that same exact question. But a- as I was seeing it, back to that 77%, you know, what does that mean? What does that calculate to Goodyear dollars? In the sense of, you know, and some of them are, I don't know how you necessarily quantify it, but it's, it kept the four-man crew and the truck from going on a 911 call. You know, what does that, you know, calculate to, I guess?
So it comes out to just about $52,000. That's just hard costs. So what I know is that when an engine goes to a call, it's about $263 per call. That's kind of all in. When I send the CP unit out, it's 165. So two-person Tahoe-type vehicles, $165 per call. The catch is the volume, right? So when we have 758 patient contacts there, that's where I, I find a little bit of value. If I have, you know, 58 contacts, I'm probably not going to find that same type of value. So, you know, how do we kind of find an economy of scale there? And maybe use our current platform or use some hybrid of that platform to try to solve the problems?
Right, right.
But yeah, right, but right now, we know hard costs, about 52,000.
52,000, okay. You know, the, the community benefit that we all discussed from the very beginning was, um, I still think, is still part of the value.
Yeah.
And, uh, and, and the whole reasoning behind the ambulance service was all about the continuum of care for this city. I mean, we, it was all those things that we were looking at. You know, back to the hospital issue and, you know, the mayor and I both sit on the hospital board and, and we see that connection of, um, within the 30-day window of, of patients coming back. You know, it is a hit to the hospital. And in the big picture, if they have so many hits like that to the hospital, uh, you know, Medicaid and Medicare look at them completely different. They'll rate the hospital completely different.
Right.
So, so there is, there is value. You know, I don't know why they're not on board yet, but there is value. Um, but the also, the other thing that we always remember, and I know it's always back and forth about, you know, what's going to happen with, um, healthcare in this nation. But, you know, you look at where's the lowest cost of healthcare? And that is either, you know, through a doctor's office, through a clinic, through it. You know, the minute that's taken away, those people that have been using that source are now going to the most expensive care with no insurance that we, the taxpayers, are going to pay at the highest. And so, you know, it's, it's really, uh, it's a balancing act for that, for sure. But my other question I was going to ask though was, um, so there were five cities within this, correct?
Yes.
We know we all, in this past budget, agreed that we would fund some money to help continue something this next year. What about the other, other four cities? What have they discussed with their...
So there are, there are some that are willing to put a little overtime department, fire department, put a little bit of overtime dollars. Peoria, I know, has had probably the most discussion.
And they have an ambulance service, don't they?
They, they do have an amb, yeah, a couple of ambulances in service now. There is, for them, it's just, you know, finding the resource to be able to do it. And surprise is, uh, they've gone down that treat and refer path, but they've also had quite a few discussions with, um, insurance companies that we've had conversations with about this program. And, and you get them to the table, you get them to kind of commit. But when it comes to the dollar, it's just they, they go silent at times. So it's, it's, we're all kind of in the same boat. And, and honestly, uh, so are the other cities that are doing this. Chandler, Tempe, Scottsdale are all kind of having the same problem. Mesa, okay.
And they had that largest grant.
Mesa had the grant. And actually, they're, it's, it's kind of sad because the grant's winding down now. They're losing personnel that were hired for the grant just because they can't find that sustainable model, so.
Eric?
I, I, I agree with what, with what Joanne, Joanne said. That was a lot of what I was thinking here. And I think also when we look at just the cost for a truck, we also need to look at, I think this is kind of an intrinsic value that's there too, is the time out of service. Because I know we're adding fire stations because there's areas of the city that we're, I want to say, kind of thin at. So when we have a station from Australia that needs to take someone down to the hospital, we leave areas of our city kind of uncovered. And I know we're working on that, but I think this helps keep those in service. How long does it take when you have to take a, a call to the hospital? What is the timeframe that that engine is out of service or how does that work?
It depends, it depends on the severity of the patient. And it depends on, you know, what's going on, where they're coming from. You know, there's a lot of different factors in there. The battalion chiefs are tasked with trying to backfill those pieces as well. So if it is going to be a, a longer term, out of their first due, we're moving units. And, uh, the alarm room, uh, in Phoenix, the dispatch center will do the same thing as well. So if it's an extended period of time, they'll start backfilling stations to provide that, um, level of service that we expect. So, um, it, it, it is all a balancing act as we work through.
So there's no, like, you can't put an actual dollar amount, but kind of an intrinsic for the people like in Australia or the West Goodyear. We know that if the station, if they're at the hospital, then they're not close by for our response times.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, people, everybody's sort of using a good question.
Yeah, people, everybody's already used a lot of good questions, so I just had a quick one. So, are you, you the head regionally or is it a group of other station, other fire chiefs and one head and the horse type person?
It, it was, I was the only fire chief on the administrative group. Uh, the rest were either deputy chiefs or battalion chiefs that were committing to the development of the program. Um, it was really all them that was, that was doing the work. Uh, they, they definitely, um, they, the team helped make it the best product that it can be.
I'm just saying, your, that group's gonna look, go forward to look for their funding sources as a whole?
Yes, yeah, as a whole.
Keep going forward?
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Joe?
You guys asked good questions.
You know, I think if, if we just focus individually on ourselves to try to resolve this issue, um, it's not gonna be a sustainable model.
Correct.
Even though I think it's a great program. I think there's major value and I think Joanne has touched on it, Bill's touched on it, Sherry, we all touched on it. There's value in these medical providers of getting on board. Like I had mentioned earlier, I, I really believe some of the best-case scenarios are there's gonna be more people showing up at these hospitals that are uninsured.
Yeah.
So, you can prevent them from using the ER as their primary healthcare physician. The hospital wins, the patient wins, the taxpayer wins. So, somehow, I'm hoping that you can all convince that everybody has a vested interest in getting in here. And that's kind of my hope where, where this thing will go because I think in the big picture, if you can convince them of that, I think long-term, everybody wins.
Agreed.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Just a quick follow-up to that. I think one of the things that's important for us to remember is that we're not talking about stopping the patient from driving to the ER. I mean, that's, that's obviously a benefit from it. The impact that we feel here on the city side is when they call nine-one-one and we send a fire truck and we tie up that unit and we do, that's the impact that we have here. So, if, if we can take steps to prevent the nine-one-one call, then we are benefiting. So, there's two parts of this and I think it's, everyone's talked about, we gotta stop them from going to the ER, that's the most expensive place. We gotta stop them from calling nine-one-one to get there. It's one thing to go there, that's, that becomes the hospital's problem, but when they're using the nine-one-one system to, to, to do it, then that's the, the challenge. And, um, I'm just looking forward to what we're gonna get in the future, um, as we go, as we move on. Sorry, Mayor.
When the, when the fire department comes to the emergency room, what's about a time that the crew stays there? Do we have an average? Is it, have they ever kept that number or, you know?
It, it depends. Uh, it depends on how busy the system is, you know, and the captain's kind of listening to calls that are going out. Um, if it's a very urgent and sick patient, they could be there, you know, tw- um, twenty and thirty minutes. Patient that they're just, you know, bringing into the hospital and kind of turn right around, they could be in there less than ten. So, it's hard, it, there's no, you know, consistent number that we can kind of pull out there.
Well, we have a problem because the Medicaid went through, if you remember that additional Medicaid that, uh, the last governor put through, it was because emergency rooms were closing down.
Yeah.
And all over the country, they were closing down, they couldn't sustain themselves. So, now, you still have to keep that in mind, that the possibility will still happen. We don't know what's coming out in the healthcare. And if it goes back to the regular, we're back where we were again. So, how do we assist our hospitals to stay open?
Right.
So, I thought, go ahead.
Can we show that video real quick? We should show the video real quick?
Go ahead. We don't have to start right at six, right? Okay, go ahead.
It's, it's only two minutes. We realized that we had a big issue. We had about four-hundred-and-fifty patients that were using the nine-one-one system for non-emergent needs about twenty-seven-hundred times per year. They know that when they call nine-one-one, we'll always show up and we'll always help them no matter what their problem is.
With Pete, we were getting frequent calls to the point where all the crews knew his address by heart. Everybody knew exactly what kind of treatment we were gonna do and we knew at certain times if we got this call, what it was for and it was, he was having trouble managing his diabetes.
I think what they did is when they went over the list of nine-one-one calls, frequencies, that they, I think I was probably at very high up on that list. Sometimes it was two or three times a week.
During the community paramedicine shifts, we asked things like how, um, they've been feeling lately. Um, we had a depression screen that we run them through to see if we could put them in contact with any mental health, uh, professionals. Even though we may not have the answer for every issue they had, we knew where to look and who to set them up with, uh, so they can get the help that they needed.
The first time we went to Pete's house was, was a huge momentum shift. I've been in the house dozens of times and it was the first time we went in there and really just slowed down and got really to know Pete and got to know him on a more personal, personal level.
I think the part that changed it, where we didn't have to call so much, is we became more conscious about what I should be eating before I go to bed at night. And Hugo's really good at that. He, he understands it and he gives you good tips on what to do and how to do it.
Since we've, uh, enrolled Pete through this, we only ran on him one time and it was, uh, more of a fluke, just a real busy time coming off vacation, wasn't able to manage his diabetes well that day and it was, it was just a one-time thing.
It, it made all the difference in the world to me and I know it's made a difference in the world to a couple of my friends that were on this program.
So far, our numbers are showing that we've had about an eighty-nine percent reduction in nine-one-one calls from our repeat users. So, this, the program's absolutely working. It's, it's diverting them away from the nine-one-one system, but it's putting them into the more appropriate healthcare resource they need to, to meet their healthcare needs.
They really care. That means a lot to our guys like us. It makes you wanna keep going.
Well, that was, uh, nice and emotional. You got that impact for sure. So, uh, any other questions? Uh, thank you so much. Thank the team. Um, I think we're still on board.